Here.
Mrs. Myers.
Here.
Mrs. Ferassi.
Here.
Mrs. Vincent.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Here. Can we please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, as a reminder to the community members here today, if you wish to speak during the public commentary, please fill out a form which is back there on the table by the entrance and hand it to our assistant Jamie and we will get you, allow you to speak. Superintendent Shaw, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
There are no additions or deletions for tonight.
Since we have none, can I have a motion?
I can motion that we accept the agenda as submitted.
Do we have support?
Second.
Jamie, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Jenkins.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferassi.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Hackett.
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. Next on the agenda is superintendent comments, Mr. Shaw.
All right, wonderful. Well, thank you very much. So, welcome, Raisenville, our home of the marigolds. So, we are thrilled to have you tonight to share all the great things that are happening at Raisenville, and I know you've got a special presentation, so I do appreciate you coming today. And so, students, one request is that microphone, have it down so you can, your little voices can get right into it and then smile because you're on camera too. So, all right, so welcome. Mr. Hoppert, you running this or?
I'm running this.
All right, it's all yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw and the Board of Education for the opportunity to come and share with you tonight. I want to introduce, this is Riley Tucker. Riley is one of our Board of Delegates representatives. This is Darren Poach, he's our restorative practice coordinator. This is Fiona White, she's our positive school climate liaison. And this is Romello Isaac, another member of our Board of Delegates. When we talked about what we wanted to share tonight, we thought about the best parts about Raisenville School and what makes our school a special place. And one of the things that we enjoy the most, I enjoy the most, is our monthly roundup. Roundup is an opportunity for us to bring the school community together. We celebrate, we cheer, we honor, and we recognize at roundup routinely and sometimes other things happen as well. And we'd like to share that with you this evening if we may.
Each roundup starts with the basics, including weather and the pledge of allegiance. Of course, roundup wouldn't be the same without the dad joke. What does a thesaurus eat for breakfast? Synonym rules.
At Raisenville, we utilize the zones of regulation as a way for kids to better understand their prevailing emotion. Students are invited to indicate where they are at the moment and then challenged to support one another.
We love our staff, so at each roundup, we celebrate them as well. A compliment to source is rewarded from one staff member to another with a little note of admiration.
At each two-hour late start, our staff honor one another with a cup runneth over filled with treats. Of course, we celebrate birthdays.
And sometimes we engage in shenanigans.
Often, we have guests. At our March roundup, Mr. Shaw read to the whole student body. Each roundup is sponsored by a grade level team that shares a presentation of their learning. Last month, first graders honored Dr. Seuss for National Reading Month.
We also award the classroom with the best attendance for the week. And we give out our marigolds of the week and, depending on the date, our students of the month.
We have kept your other memento.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you have marigolds from last year.
They have stayed here the whole time.
That's wonderful.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who knows you were bringing gifts?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
You can't leave them empty handed. Because you got your awards, right? Right there. You tell everybody. They had a 5K at Raisenville, I want just to, you can tell them, they'll believe it. It's really nice.
We select, teachers nominate students of the month, and so, we go through. Marigold of the week is really an effort for us to recognize all of our students. And at some point, every student at Raisenville will be marigold of the week. Student of the month is more discerning. So, teachers nominate kids who they feel have met our expectations. We have learner profile traits, and if they've, if they've really exemplified those traits, they'll nominate kids for student of the month. So, that's why the medal is a big deal. The question that you may be asking, or I would ask, is what's so important about this monthly celebration? We have, Mr. Poach has drafted to share that. So, our biggest goal at Raisenville is to promote a happy and safe school. We believe that has to be our first priority. It's the environment where children learn best. It's where our teachers can excel and do what they need to do. And we believe in unity. We believe in creating a building where everyone is welcome and everyone has equal opportunity to succeed. And all of this is a piece of what we do as far to create this culture at Raisenville. Roundup is an important part of our PBIS program, and it also ties in with our social emotional learning curriculum. We teach kids lessons in zones of regulation to help them learn to manage emotions. We teach lessons in the mind-up curriculum where we instruct them on where emotions come from and what parts of the brain emotions exist in and how we regulate ourselves. We are using the trails curriculum that was adopted extensively in our schools, helping our kids learn how to make decisions and manage themselves and be good friends. And we also teach components of Dan Newby emotional literacy. Some of you weren't around when, when Dan was here, pre-pandemic. And he en-serviced our district for a good couple of years in emotional literacy. And so, all of these pieces come together to combine our social emotional learning curriculum, which we're very proud of. And we think you can, you can feel it in our building when you walk in. We think the kids love being there, I love being there, and I think our staff does too. And this is what we're about, and it's this idea of unity. And once a roadrunner, always a roadrunner. And this is the culture we want to create. And we're very proud of it. And this is, this is a piece of that. So, I'm going to share some data with you. So, we use kickboard information to help us navigate kind of where we are and how we're doing. And one of the things that we try to have our staff and we encourage students is what's called a four-to-one ratio, which means four positive comments to one either corrective comment or even a negative comment. When we look at our data, our positivity ratio was forty-nine to one, and the gold standard is four-to-one. It's important how we talk to each other. It's important how kids talk to kids. It's important how adults talk to adults and how adults talk to children. Let's take a look at the next one. Our trimester two referrals decreased by forty-two percent from having ninety-five to fifty-five. Our positive kickboard entries during trimester two increased three-hundred-and-sixty-three percent from seven-thousand-two-hundred-forty-seven to thirty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven. This works. And when we're kind to each other and we're good to each other and we build unity and we include everyone, this is what we get. And we hope we create learning environments where everybody can be successful. So, at the end of roundup, we challenge kids to be reflective on what they've learned, what they've experienced, and what, what they, what they get, right? So, I challenge kids, I get to be the master of ceremonies, and I'll be honest with you, I never met a microphone I didn't like, and so, I enjoy it myself. But I always ask, I asked the kids, and Mr. Shaw was at our, at our March roundup, and I asked them, I look around the room, the teachers sit around the outside of the room. So, look around the room, look at all the people here who care about you, who love you, who want to lift you up. To be a marigold means to be supportive. If you, the metaphor comes from the idea that a marigold is a companion plant for gardeners, and we plant marigolds by our gardens to help foster, keep weight pests and help foster strong growth. And so, we want our kids to be marigolds, that's why it says, be someone's marigold today. And I asked them, look around the room, look at all these people that come here every day. They go home and they work. They come here and they work. They worry about you there, they worry about you here. You've got more support in this room than, than, or the amount of support that will help you grow and be the kind of, the kind of successful learner that you want to be. And so, we challenge them, right, right? And I ask, I look around the room, and I ask them every time, I ask them this question, and I stole this, by the way, I'll freely admit I stole it. I ask them this question every month. I ask them, who's got it better than us? If you've ever heard a gym full of kids scream at the top of their lungs, nobody, you have not lived. And so, I am, I am so proud of, my wife came to roundup the day I got made into an ice cream sundae. And she said to me when she walked away, they all sit there and they listen to you. I'm like, yeah, they do, they do. And these guys will attest. Our kids are great at roundup, they appreciate the opportunity to be a community, they appreciate the opportunity to celebrate one another, we see real payoff from this. And it's one of the things that I think makes, one of the many things that I think makes Raisenville School a really special place. So, thank you very much.
All right, well, hey, thank you, thank you, thank you to our super board of delegate members, parents, thanks for coming tonight, to our staff, thank you very much. Mr. Hoppert, I gotta say, I do remember those days as elementary principal and sliding into a bowl, a pool full of jello or the sundaes, the things you do to encourage kids to read and a bunch of other things. So, loved seeing you as a sundae and.
It was honestly really fun. I had a great time.
Yeah.
I mean, I never saw somebody, I got in the shower, I never saw somebody sprinkles in my life. But, you know, and then like outside the shower, sprinkles everywhere. I probably will still find sprinkles.
You will.
We had a great time.
But, great job tonight, and thank you so very much, and.
Thank you.
So.
One last round, please.
All right, so to our parents and students, you're more welcome to stay or you can go. You can float your boats tonight. So, that's all I have for first round of comments.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Shaw. Public commentary for board agenda items only. Carrie, do we have any public commentary? Okay, thank you.
I suppose there's a kind of, would you like to speak now?
If you wanted to wait, someone that's not bored, so we can do it all at once.
Okay. It's your decision, Yvonne. Okay, the board discussion and action items. We have our contracted services and resignations report. Is there any discussion on those reports? Hearing none, next is our consent agenda. Are there any items the board members would like to be moved off the consent agenda and moved over to new business? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items B two A to B two B as a consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we do the consent agenda items of B two A through B two B.
Do we have support?
Support.
Jamie, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferassi.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins.
Yes.
Mr. Hackett.
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. As we move into new business, just to inform our couple of community members that these items have been discussed extensively in the board work sessions, which are available for anybody to attend. And we certainly have done our due diligence and reviewed these extensively before we come to a vote. And as additional remember, reminders, I just said the work sessions are open to the public. Next, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Shaw for the La Pleasance Road property sale discussion.
Okay, well, thank you very much. So, at one of our workshops, the Habitat for Humanity came in to present to the Board of Education the idea of purchasing property on La Pleasance Road right next to their facility. And I'm going to put that up on the screen here. And so, tonight, we're putting this in as informational for the community to know that what we're looking at doing is this piece of property right here, the football field, hopefully my mouse is working on the screen for everyone to see, not you all, people on the other screen there, is off to the, to the south there, I'm sorry, west. And so, we're looking at selling this property right here to Habitat for Humanity where they'll, it's three acres, where they're going to put six, I'm sorry, eight houses that are also have an apartment attached to them on the property. And so, after reviewing this project with our attorney, the process is that we just, we've had, we may, we'll be looking at an offer. There's no requirements for us to do a posting out to our community. So, we're taking this time tonight, though, to share it with the community. That this three acres would be sold and a purchase agreement will be crafted and brought to the Board of Education at our next meeting here in May. Whereupon, at that meeting, the Board of Education may take that purchase agreement, either approve it or not approve it. The numbers that were used to generate came off of the property as well as up for sale. And so, the numbers for this property are used off of that asking price at that time. And so, it is a project that would take for Habitat. They still got to go through all approvals with the city and, but would be potentially an advantage for the, for at least eight people in the community to have homes there. So, I wanted to take this time, though, to answer any questions by our Board of Education on what's happening here.
Just a little more information for the, the public is, this works, fits in well with the city of Monroe, Monroe Township, what they call the La Pleasance Road Corridor Project, where they're going to change the intersection with Jones Avenue. There's going to be a bike slash walking trail that goes out La Pleasance Road through the city into Monroe Township. I'm not sure they extend it where it ends. And then, there's going to be additional work on Jones Avenue with, called improved sidewalk, walking bike trail so that people, the end result is what they call walkable city. So, you could walk, bike up to the Kroger Plaza or to the drugstore that's there as well. So, this obviously fits in, these people will be able to, to walk, bike, move around the city without having cars if they don't have cars.
So, any questions from any of our board members? Okay, so I appreciate that. Like I said, I look for a purchase agreement at our next board meeting. If anything shifts, I will pass that along to you. So, our next item is the Prometica contract. And so, we have provided you with the contract and we, and it's an extension of, for two years, we'll Prometica. Prometica, as a reminder, they provide services at Monroe High School for both students to see them from the lens of a clinical nurse and/or a therapist. The, and the contract that you see is just, and it's an extension for that two-year agreement. So, it is a recommendation of the administration, Board of Education approved the contract extension with Prometica.
Okay, hearing that, do we have a motion on the Prometica contract?
Make a motion for the Prometica contract that we extend it for two years.
Is there support?
Support.
Discussion, any board members have discussion on the contract?
On, I'm item four, we discussed that at the previous one to, you know, show that that project that has been completed. Is that a policy that is within our policies or is that a policy that's held somewhere else? The parental consent policy.
That was one that, two years ago, that the Board of Education wanted to make sure that was in, being followed by Prometica. And so.
Who holds the policy, Prometica or us?
That's our, well, it's their policy too to have to make that, that reach out.
Okay, that was my only question I looked for, and I, I mentioned it to Tom today that I, I didn't see it and I wasn't sure what you were referring to.
So, we don't have a Board of Education policy, we just wanted to make sure for, for the board two years ago was that, that Prometica is contacting parents prior to having any conversation with students.
Yeah.
And so, that is their policy and their practice. We just wanted to make sure it was documented and that, that they are doing that.
Oh, so it's theirs?
It's their policy.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, Jamie, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Ferassi.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, our next item is the Board of Education meeting schedule. And we're requesting the Board of Education cancel the July eighth Board of Education meeting, which is number eleven. Do know that if we need to have an extra work session in July for our board, we would gladly have that. We are required per the Meetings Act to have one board meeting a month, and that meeting in July has been scheduled for. I appreciate getting on that so quickly.
Yep.
Thank you for July twenty-second. So, it is a recommendation of the administration, Board of Education cancel the July eighth meeting and have its one meeting set as already by July twenty-second.
Thank you. Do we have a motion regarding the July board meeting?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education meeting schedule that we cancel the meeting for July eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Do we have support? Discussion, any board member discussion?
I remember when we were laying this calendar out, we said, we're not going to have a meeting on that date.
But the board also approved to have two meetings in July. So, we, we did approve it, the calendar with two meetings in July, which is why there's two on there. So, it did come up, and yes, it was voted on, and so, now it's, the request has to be removed.
I would also like to request that we consider having our July twenty-first board work session at the Kinnabush Math and Science Center instead of here at the administration building. Reason being, it is fantastic and that it is often a site that not very many people are familiar with. And in the summer months, it's particularly active. And so, we might be able to catch some of the summer school teachers, maybe, question mark, or just learn about the summer school programs that are being offered out there. I think it would be really great. It's just a, a request to make as part of the meeting tonight.
Would you like to make an amendment to the month?
No, I don't need to do that.
We can make that happen.
It would, it would just be like, I just wanted to bring it up as conversation. We can make that decision later.
It's already decided, so I appreciate it.
In addition to making that change for July eighth, it just makes sense to not have a meeting that night as we're coming off of Fourth of July weekend. And most of our administrators and staff that we would normally have at a board meeting have not even taken a summer break at that point. So, really nice for them to have a little time with their families.
Yeah, especially since May and June are very busy months for the administration, very busy. Any further discussion? If not, Jamie, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferassi.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero.
And so, our last item for new businesses, the kitchen updates at Raisenville Elementary, Custer Two Elementary and Arborwood North Elementary. Mrs. Shook.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Tonight, we're asking the board to move to accept the bid of four-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand dollars from Speaker General Contractors of Northwood, Ohio for the kitchen updates at Raisenville Elementary, Custer Two Elementary and Arborwood North Elementary and reject all other bids. This project will be funded with the Food Service Fund.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we do the kitchen update at Raisenville Elementary, Custer Two, Arborwood North Elementary, and we do it as it's proposed here, not to exceed four-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand dollars.
Thank you. Do we have support?
More?
Discussion, any board member discussion?
What are we getting for four-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand dollars?
Mr. Kohler gave me a nice summary of the work. At Raisenville, they are redoing the interior cooler freezer and replacing it with a larger interior cooler and an external exterior freezer. And then, some other work that goes along with those changes. Custer Two, they are also removing the existing interior cooler freezer and installing a larger one. And right now, I guess it's in the boiler room, and they're moving it over in the dry storage room that's closer to the kitchen. And then, Arborwood North is installing a new door between the kitchen and the dry storage area.
So, what was Raisenville waiting on when they were redoing the kitchen updates in this last round? Remember, we kept saying it hasn't arrived, it hasn't arrived?
There has been some delays in receipt of the roll-up doors at the cafeterias that were remodeled last summer.
But we didn't add any kind of refrigeration changes last, wasn't that last year?
Correct.
Yeah, with that, so the changes are.
In a different area.
Okay, thank you.
They won't affect what was already done, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just trying to look at the totality of the project, and this was not included in the last project design. So, my question becomes why? And if they're, you know, just why, I would.
I think because of the scope of the work that they were doing there already, they couldn't do all of it all over the summer.
Now, you know what this question's going to be. How much of funds out of the Food Service Fund have went to students with the excess that we had just, since the last time we discussed?
I can't put a dollar amount, but we have continued to offer higher quality food as we have in the previous years.
So, do we do ice cream every Fridays or something? Wasn't that my request?
The USDA would allow us.
Oh, shrimp, that was right, do shrimp on Fridays. So, there has been monies, that's ESSA excess that has been re-put back into the program for the students.
Yeah, we start there first before we ask for money for the projects.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Jamie?
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferassi.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. Next would be old business. Next would be old business, since we have no old business tonight, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Shaw for his superintendent comments.
Wonderful, well, thank you very much. All right, so kindergarten registration, so for all of you up here that have kindergartners at home, no kindergartners out there, kindergarten registration is up and running, it is a pre-registration format, it's in-person appointments at your, at the, in each building, and that begins on May the 5th, so please, get the word out, kindergarten registration. So now the flip is, though, we have decision day, so we go from kindergarten registration to decision day for seniors, so decision day is coming up on May the 1st, and you all know that's next week, right? Already? And, oh my word, this year has just flown by, so, May the 1st, decision day out at Monroe High School, and that begins at noon. Employee recognition month is, employee recognition celebration is also on May the 1st, that evening, down at Leroy's, and so, it'll be a wonderful evening recognizing the new staff, retirees, and employees, and reaching their different milestones. Young Entrepreneurs Showcase, just to keep packing stuff into the beginning of May, is on May, Wednesday, May the 7th, at 5:30 out at Raisinville, at the River Rays National Battlefield. That's gonna be an exciting night, if you can come out, because in the past, it's been at Monroe High School on a Saturday, and so the change of the venue, ability for people to move around, we're expecting that to be a really great event, so 5:30 to 7:30, come on out, take part in that. And then our Great Kindness Walk, our Second Annual Kindness Walk, will be taking part this year on Saturday, May the 10th, it'll be downtown this year. There's two options for those of you that want to get out and run, that's at 8:30, it's a short, nice 5K, and then there's also then just the walk around the downtown area, begins at 9:00 AM, starts out in the Ranger Square, and at, inside the walk, there's different prompts, and we're gonna be pairing up with either, with a community person from, like, a local business owner to, and a staff person, and give those prompts, and then we'll be finishing up at the Ranger Square with meal and breakfast, breakfast, music, and then just time to be together. Last year, we had four or 500 people, this year, we're trying to get to 1,000, so, we're gonna encourage you people to come out, take part, we're looking forward, though, to be in the downtown area. And then the last one today, it was a pretty exciting day, so this year, Andy Marchese's Construction Trades Class, which is our fundamental class, class one, partnered up with United Way, so this year, we've been working with United Way on Acts of Kindness, but this year, though, in that one, they prefabbed out, geez, is there a number here? Wendy, how many ramps did they prefab out?
The materials for four ramps.
Four ramps, okay, so Andy Marchese's class pre-built four ramps, so now, they can take those out and install the United Way can, and which just takes the amount of time and manpower to do that ramp installation right down, so, it was wonderful, great opportunity for our kids to be involved, and it's truly, I mean, that's volunteerism, and, but at same time, kids learn, so, really excited for that, and that will be in our weekend review, and out there on the social media feeds also, so, that's all I have for tonight, sir.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Shaw. Public commentary on any topic, Carrie, I assume we do have one?
We have one.
Oh, we have another one coming up.
Okay, well, I have several questions, and they all came from last night's and tonight's workshops, so hopefully it can read my scribbles. First one was on the La Pleasance Road property, if we do sell that, is the money earmarked, will it go just to the general fund, is there some other special fund that it will go to? And I was thinking, after last night's talk, that we should set it aside and put it in a fund to build a new pool, or refurbish our pool, because you know I'm not gonna give that up, I have a 10th grader, and he has a 10-year-old brother who likes to swim, too, so maybe, someday after 24 years, that pool will be competitive. Then after tonight's discussion on budget, I said, well, that money's probably not going towards a pool. Next question, we talked about eliminating enrichment leaders, and just curious as to how many of those, do we have one in each elementary building, or, or what, how many? And you did say, unless there's a title or a grant funding, they will probably be eliminated. Let's see, oh, is our budget shortfall due to declining enrollment? I assume most of our money comes from either state or our property taxes, so, and then I'm kinda thinking, maybe there's a tie together between enrichment programming for our kids and student enrollment drops, our kids leaving because they don't have enrichment opportunities? I know we have a, a big push towards kindness in the Raisinville presentation, which is all great stuff, to get kids to behave well and cooperate, and I'm just wondering if we're doing enough enrichment. And let's see, my next, oh, on resignations, I always think it's curious when teachers resign this time of year, I mean, are they taking an early retirement, have they found a new job, or are they just burned out as far as teaching goes, so, just a lot of general questions, and let's see if I have anything. Oh, kindergarten registration, when they do that, are there ever recommendations to maybe, instead of going into kindergarten, going into the young five program? Do they do any kind of placement testing or something like that? So, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne.
Time? Okay, I'm Andy Carver, I am an owner of Adrian Mechanical Services, and one of the larger portions of the $469,000 of the Raisinville project, I think Speaker carried my number for the mechanical side, the refrigeration side, the coolers, they are not cheap, so that's, you know, where a lot of the money's going, but also wanted to thank the board, first off, for the public service that you guys do, because it's not an easy thing, same with superintendent, would never want that job, good for you, as well as the rest of the board, good for you, I would never want that job, but you guys are, are great, I wanted to thank you guys for the work that you've given us so far, I don't know if you know or not, I'm sure Mr. Shaw does, but we did some renovations at Waterloo, and then we put in a bunch of air conditioning units at Jefferson, so, so far, I hope everything's been going good with that. If you guys have any questions on the Raisinville or the Custer, I know pretty detailed as to what's going on with that. I did bring a few letters of recommendation from other schools that we work at, not very many, so, you guys can dip me up, but, I brought some, these are personal references that I reached out to, some are board members, some are superintendents, some are head of facilities that I deal with, but we do work at a lot of schools, specifically in the Lenway County, Hillsdale County, and a few over this area, Dundee Schools, probably the closest to you guys, Island Schools, we do a ton of work for, so, appreciate the work you guys are giving us, got these, like I said, recommendations, I'll hand them to you.
Thank you.
Hand them to you.
Thank you.
And, like I said, appreciate, appreciate the work that we've been given so far, it's been, it's been good, I hope it's been good on your guys' end. Any questions about the Raisinville project, or the Custer project, so I'm here?
Through the process of the, during public comment, we don't respond.
Okay.
But I already asked all my questions, so...
Okay, that's completely fair, you can deal with Speaker, the guy I was dealing with, Eric Gabe, that's who I bid stuff to, he's very familiar with the project as well, but I think the mechanical side is well over 50% of the project, I think you guys will be happy with the results, I know it's a lot of money, but I think you'll be happy with the results, so, thank you guys.
Thank you. Any additional, Carrie? Okay, board member commentary, is there any board members that would like to comment tonight?
I just wanted to follow up on school of choice, and how that's going, and are we just going, like, typically, or is there any more than usual?
I haven't, I don't, so, when it comes to the school of choice, applications coming in, I really don't start paying attention until, start asking, what, mid-May?
Oh.
It'll be mid-May, start looking at it, but it's kind of May with the deadline, that's when we do the final evaluation, and...
I just didn't know if there were a lot coming in, if there weren't, or that it was just the same as typical.
You know, I'd say it's fairly typical.
Okay.
What we've seen so far.
That was it.
From my point, just wanna say, I was out at the career event at the Merchants Building Day, was very well attended, Carrie was out there trying to get me to work for her. I know Leah was there and Jackie, so, there was busloads of kids from Ida, from Summerfield, lots of kids walking around, seemed to be very productive. Any additional commentary? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Do we have support? Show of hands?
And not our feet.
Thank you. So that Monroe Public Schools Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, is adjourned, the time is 7:40.
All right, everybody, take care.